Good morning and welcome to this internal webinar of Prevent NCD. My name is Knut Ingel-Klepp and I am the scientific coordinator of Prevent NCD and I do work at the Norwegian Institute of Public Health here in Oslo.
And welcome from me as well. My name is Linda Granlund and I am the Director of Public Health and Prevention at the Norwegian Directorate of Health and I am the coordinator also of Prevent NCD. And thank you so much for joining us here today. Knut Ingel and I are very excited to be sharing the next hour with you and hope to provide you with useful project insight and motivation.
I wish I was able to say that it's great to see you all, but unfortunately today it's the ultimate one-way communication. But we will, towards the end of the webinar, open up for comments and questions. And it might not also last for as long as one hour, depending a bit on how many questions and comments you will have.
Our joint action is a unique collaborative effort with highly ambitious goals, with the main target being to reduce the burden of cancer and other NCDs and the common risk factors. It is the largest EU joint action on health of all times and the expectations are high. Each and every one of you plays an important role in working towards achieving these significant goals. In today's seminar, we will focus on the background, highlights, structure, challenges and potential solutions.
Some of us, quite a few actually, have been working now on this project for more than two years. But we know that is not the case for all of you. There are a number that were recruited onto the projects, even after we had the kickoff in Oslo earlier this year and more recently. So for that reason, we will do an overview now of the various activities that we have been undertaking this year. Those of you who know this real well have to bear over with us, but we hope that it will be of interest for all of you to hear what are the recent developments and not the least, how do we think most strategically about how we will move forward with the Prevent NCD.
And to start with the bigger picture. As of 2024, a large majority of the population will either die from or suffer from cancer or other NCDs. And non-communicable diseases are responsible for 80% of the disease burden in the EU countries and the leading cause of avoidable premature deaths. Reducing the burden of NCDs requires a holistic approach and tackling health inequalities across the borders. Most importantly, health promotion and disease prevention can reduce the prevalence by as much as 70%. NCDs do not only affect life expectancy, they also affect the quality of life and participation opportunities of people living with NCD and their families. And the UN Sustainable Development Goals aim to reduce the premature mortality from NCDs by one-third by 2030 through effective prevention and treatment, while also promoting mental health and wellbeing.
So we are of course not the first one to think that we really need to try to prevent this group of diseases. There has been a lot of work and research in this area over many years. And earlier this fall, last month, we had a very interesting seminar with WHO and also Jakarta, the other joint action that we're collaborating closely with, on monitoring. And this slide, as you see here, was presented then by WHO Euro and it would be part of a report they are publishing later this year. And there are just a couple of points I want to make here. And one, in the graph to the right, you see that there was a huge variation across European country, to the extent that we are actually implementing best practices or the policy measures that are seen as important in order to prevent NCD. And in the table in the left lower corner, you see that less than half of the countries are fully implementing what are seen as important policies in the area. So that really tells us that there are a lot of room for improvement and also that it's a lot to be learned from comparing notes and looking across country to see how we're dealing with this issue of NCD prevention and health promotion today. And this body of research and knowledge that is out there is then reflected in the key documents that are really guiding our work. One is the Europe's beating cancer plan, that has very concrete objectives for how prevention should take place. They have, for example, set very clearly that the goal for Europe should be that there should be less than 5% of daily smoking by 2040. And the expectation is that our work will contribute to achieve that goal. Then we also have the document Healthier Together, where member states and the European Union and collaborating countries came together and set priorities for how they want to move along when it comes to health promotion and disease prevention. And these documents, along with the big knowledge body that WHO are providing and their best buys, really then formed the basis for us when we did write the application for Prevent NCD. And to the far right, you see the document, which was the call or invitation for application. And that really reflected then what is in these other documents. We're putting them up now because we think it's really important that all of you, whether you worked just on one pilot or are involved in a broad array of activities, that you take a look to see what are the expectations and then that we keep in mind how can our work then contribute to fulfill the expectations laid down in these documents.
And we have here a major opportunity to generate impact on key area of the health burden and member states' needs. And this slide presents the key numbers of the project, illustrating that this project is not only huge in scope, but also carries a sense of urgency. An EU has allocated a substantial 20% of its overall health budget to support health promotion and prevention. And the project spans from January 2024 to December 27, with a total budget of 95.5 million euros, in which 76.5 million is contributed by the European Commission. The project brings together 25 countries and 106 partners, with 71 affiliated entities and 10 associated partners. And this collaboration will oversee the completion of 68 tasks, including 113 subtasks and 98 pilot initiatives, all aimed at strengthening prevention of cancer and NCDs.
It's big.
It's big, enormous.
And then we have this very ambitious objectives and goals for the project. The main aim is to contribute to reduce the burden of cancer and other NCDs and the common risk factors, and also to reduce social inequality. And it's also emphasized that this should take into account both what they call personal and the societal level. And there are four main objectives that are outlined in our contract. And one is to improve the joint capacity of the member state. And I think the word joint is really important here in that it's an expectation that we are working with all the member states who are part of the consortium and really sharing knowledge and increasing the capacity to implement successful or promising policy measures and interventions. Then there is an expectation that we should improve data and the monitoring system. And there are many ways in which we're doing that, but we really have the aim of hoping to have a more coherent system of monitoring both mortality, morbidity, risk factor levels, policy implementation. And then, as I already said, reducing social inequality is emphasized over and over again in all the background documents and really should put a big stamp on our project. And then the final objective is to engage with and support key actors. And there we have listed a number of key actors, such as decision-makers, the general population, NGOs in the field, and also patient groups and various vulnerable groups. So then to see how we involve with and engage with the end users, have a proper involvement of various target groups in all of activities is really a key objective.
And this is a busy slide showing the organization of our joint action and our 10 work packages, which most of you are familiar with. Here I will briefly describe the different work packages objectives to show how each of them contributes to reach our main aim by improving joint capacities, improving data and monitoring systems, reducing social inequalities and engaging with key actors, as Knut Ingel just said. And to start with work package one, Coordination. It is responsible for overseeing the entire work to ensure that all academic, administrative and financial goals, expectations and requirements are met. In addition, VP1 also ensures systematic communication with the European Commission, including Hadija and DG Santé regarding the project's progress. And supporting the main objectives of the joint action, the dissemination and communication work. In the next work package, work package two, aims to facilitate coherent, timely, effective and sustainable internal and external communication of the project. And the general objective of work package three is to evaluate the progress of the joint action against its internal milestones and deliverables and to ensure that the joint action accomplishes its established objectives. And the overall objective of the next work package, work package four, is to ensure sustainable integration of the project's outcomes into national and European policies. And key sustainability elements are the establishment of two important forums, the EU Consortium on Cancer Prevention and a Policy Decision Makers Forum. And we will talk more about these two forums later on. And then to work package five, which will aim to improve compliance, coherence, wider implementation and enforcement of fiscal and regulatory measures targeting major NCD risk factors. Work package six focuses on safe and health-promoting environments with a strong community action perspective, including participation of different stakeholders for developing infrastructures and capacities to promote health equity at a local level. Then to the objective of work package seven, which is to contribute to a reduction in social inequalities in cancer and other NCDs in Europe. And in addition, we have a task dedicated to health literacy, addressing both individual, digital and organizational health literacy. For work package eight, the aim is to further develop the monitoring systems for cancer and other NCDs at both European, national, regional and local level and to give power to knowledge-based measures to reduce the burden of disease and inequalities in health. Work package nine aims to strengthen the implementation of health in all policies across different governance levels, focusing particularly on key risk factors and determinants to prevent cancer and other NCDs. And lastly, work package 10 aims to reduce the burden of disease mainly at an individual level by looking at both genetic determinants, lifestyles such as alcohol diet and tobacco, and tertiary prevention. And intervention and information work for individuals at increased risk are among the topics in this work package.
So as you know, the work packages labeled one to four here are called the mandatory, that you will find in all joint actions, while the five to 10 are the technical ones. And the question then is, why did we end up with these work packages? And the concept societal level and personal level was already introduced in our main aim of the project. And this reflects the fact that when about 80% of the disease burden in Europe is due to NCD, we're not talking just about some high-risk group that we need to address. High-risk groups are of course important to reach, but even if we were able to identify the 10 or 15% with the most risk and took all the risk away from them, we still would have a major problem in Europe because this is a problem at a population level. And for that reason, we really think that we need to focus on societal level or structural drivers, that policy measures that have an impact on the population. But when we look at the scientific literature, we over and over again see that there is a lot of research going on on what we might label as more individual or personal-focused interventions. Before starting on Prevent NCD, I coordinated the Horizon 2020 project on preventing childhood obesity. And when we did a review of the literature, seeing what are the effective interventions, we saw that there were quite a bit on school-based educational efforts, but nothing on other more structural measures. That is, it wasn't saying that these are not effective, but there wasn't literature available. So that, for that reason, we also want to make sure that we contribute to have more solid evidence and literature, knowledge building on what are the impact of societal level or population-based interventions and policies. And one important reason for doing that is that in the literature, you see quite clearly that if you solely focus on the personal-level interventions, you run the risk of actually increasing social inequity related to NCD and health. And that is for the very reason that to engage with that kind of interventions, you need to have some level of motivation and resources that not everyone have. And those interventions then tend to often be more acceptable to those of us with high education and the personal resources and motivation to engage with health measures. So for that reason, we came up then with these six technical work packages, where three of them really cut across the spectrum of policies and intervention from society to the individual. Health in all policies is really critical concept that refers to all of these and are relevant for all of these interventions. The same with social equality. And we also want to monitor at all aspects of this continuum. And then we have, as Linda already presented, work packages focused on more structural drivers. We call it here, regulation and taxation. We have a strong focus on the living environment, the options for doing both structural and more individual-level interventions within community at the municipality level. And then we also, of course, are, find it important to address those at most risk. Though, different ways of portraying this. And one way we could look at it is to look at this, what we might call causal change, going from the distal underlying determinants of health to the very proximal, that is close to the people that we want to make sure have reduced the risk. And what we see is that if we move to the left in this picture, we are able to address a number of risk factors and diseases with the same policy or intervention measures. So for that reason, again, we think it is really important to be aware of what we call the underlying determinants of health, such as social determinants, including education, employment, upbringing, housing and so forth. And then it isn't all that realistic that we will be able to change those factors within this four-year project, but they create a context that we really need to be aware of. And we also think that in order to succeed with reducing social inequality, governments and decision-makers need to look at all the various possibility they have to promote health across different sectors. And our work packages then again try to address factors at different levels in this causal chain. And as you can see at the top, we are also then focused both at the EU level, where a number of important policy initiatives are taken and followed up. And they help provide a context in which national countries can implement their policies. There's a lot going on on sub-national level. And then you also have, as we said, the vulnerable groups, high-risk groups. So without going in more into detail of that here, I think this is the more conceptual framework that we try to work within. And when we see that maybe we have a lot of activities that tend to move to the right in this picture, we have to think, okay, how can we compensate for that within the project?
And usually, joint actions have been organized related to risk factors. But however, in this joint action, as Knut Ingel just said, we have adopted a more integrated approach by embedding the risk factors as cross-cutting teams into all of the scientific work packages. And this approach enhances collaboration and maximizes the impact of our efforts, ensuring added value of our work package structure. And the cross-cutting teams are tobacco and healthy diets, physical inactivity and alcohol. And additionally, we have several cross-cutting activities, such as the Equity Group, Equity Lens and indicators related to equity, and the work on, for example, consolidated joint glossary, as is our communication and dissemination work and the evaluation. And thematic coordinators have been identified for the four major NCD risk factors and are presented in this slide. And their activities will include ensuring alignment and providing relevant initiatives across work packages, collaborating on strategic coordination and facilitating effective communication between work packages together with coordinators.
And then we have a number of different protocols and activities in place to secure the scientific, both relevance and quality of the work that we're doing. Many of you have been involved in developing what we call detailed protocols, so pilots and other activities. And we had a first version of those presented earlier this spring. Now, a number of you are involved in updating those to provide more details so that it is transparent and easy for everyone to see what is it that we're actually trying to achieve, how can we do it? And that also helps us then to secure that we use similar methodology across a number of activities. We also follow up and have regular meetings between the coordinators and the various work packages, both leaders and task leaders. The ambition is to have at least one in-person meeting a year and then we have, of course, several digital meetings. We have a big set of indicators and targets for the project. And those are specific objective indicators and also what the Commission call action-level indicators. And it's very important that all of you are aware of these and how they apply to the work that you are doing. Because we know that this is something that the Commission really will keep an eye on to see how we are keeping up and are meeting those objectives. And it's very important to keep track of what we're doing here and now so that we don't have to go back and whenever we have to report and try to find out what was it we did a year ago in terms of dissemination activities or other activities that relate to the indicators. And then finally, for this slide, we have an obligation and also opportunity to present and disseminate the findings from our project through publications. We have established a publication board that really are eager to facilitate and help all of you promote publication. We have a goal of having about 50 scientific publications in the scientific journals. We have a goal of having as much as 60 policy briefs, which will be extremely important because it's based on what we say in the policy briefs that we will come up with our final recommendations at the end of the project. And we do have a scientific publication work plan. And we have also a form that we want you to fill in whenever you have ideas for publications. And these will, it will be communicated clearly where you can find these different plans and forms.
Quite a lot.
Yes.
And this slide shows the governance structure of the project. And most of you are familiar with this feature. The strategic decision-making body is the General Assembly. And the day-to-day coordination and execution of the project is by the Executive Committee, the EXCO, whereas the day-to-day work on tasks is done in the work packages. And the coordinator team in VP1 is coordinating the project and is maintaining reporting processes and contact with the European Commission. In the coming slides, we will come back to the various bodies that support the project.
So we are not alone in this. We have a number of bodies that we can lean on and that will assist and help us. And one of them is the External Expert Advisory Board. They have been established and they've had a couple of meetings. One of them was in person, where they joined the Executive Committee last month for a two-day meeting. And they consist of what we have identified as top experts within Europe that really could have a critical but friendly look at what we are doing, trying to guide us and see how we can improve our action. We also have a stakeholder forum and right now we are finalizing the stakeholder analysis. It's our colleagues in Communication and Dissemination Work Package that has the main responsibility for taking that work further. And soon we will have a stakeholder forum up and running, which will be very important to provide input. And then we also have what we call the Youth Advisory Group. And youth, the young part of the population, are of course very important when it comes to looking at NCD prevention in the life course perspective. So we're very happy that we have established this advisory group. I think we could also have had a group for older people, more senior people. And if someone wants to take the initiative to set that up, please do. And also other groups we could establish.
And as I said earlier in this webinar, among the key sustainability elements in the project is setting up two important sustainability forums. And the first one here is the EU Consortium on Cancer Prevention, EU CCP. And the goal of EU CCP is to build momentum on cancer prevention and health promotion at EU level around a common agenda. And the second one is the Policy Decision Makers Forum, the PDMF. And its purpose is to engage with policymakers and be an advisory board consisting of multi-sectoral representation of EU member states, presidencies and officials of relevant director generals and European Commission agencies.
And then we have a number of internal boards that are also helping us run the project. And one is the Data Management Board, that address issues related to data management, that we adhere to GDPR, keep an overview and inventory of the data that are collected within the work and which is also important then to see how we can exchange data between partners. We have an ethics board that meet regularly, addressing issues as ethical approval, make sure that those are being collected, keep those on file and also assist in ethical approval if this cannot be done at the institutional level. And we have the publication board, as was already mentioned. We also have a working group on glossary to see how we can use the same concepts and have adherence across conceptual concepts in the project. concepts in the project. So while this picture is complicated enough, this is of course a very simplified version of the project because we have all these other actors that we are relating to. So you have the member states, you have all the affiliated entities, municipalities and counties. And also we have ten associated partners now within the project. Then we have a number of important non governmental organizations that we like to collaborate with. We have the action grants that we have a close collaboration with and our number of Horizon research projects that are really doing critical work that we need to collaborate with or at least be aware of what they're doing and how that work might inform what we're doing. And then there are all these other joint actions that have been done previously, developed important tools and methodology that we can apply or that are starting up and we have to make sure that we can identify synergies and make sure that we do not overlap or do the same work twice. And then we also have the private sector. And right now, we are developing a policy to see how we best can interact with the private sector in the field of prevention and promotion. I mentioned the External Expert Advisory Board and they just provided us with their first written report. And that will be made available to all of you on our Teams channels. Here is just a few points that they made that I wanted to highlight. And first is that they were impressed and think it's inspiring work that we're doing, which is nice. But then they say that this is a really bold investment by the Commission and by the member states. And they challenged us to have bold activities that match that investment. They think we should focus and be able to identify some core target outcomes and make sure that we have a plan for how to reach those. They want us to focus on upstream or structural action and not only individual level actions, like we talked about, that is the intention. And they said that we should have a theory for how we think that our action actually will produce the impact and outcome and impact that we aim for. And then they also see that we're doing so much, there's so many activities with almost hundred pilots and all these subtasks. And they're concerned about how we are able to integrate that and really do challenges on that. And then they also say there exist a lot of frameworks, methods and tools out there and use what is there. Do not think that you have to invent the wheel all the time. So these are some of the key messages and this we will now discuss with the Executive Committee. But I hope that this document also will generate some interesting discussions for all of you in your tasks or subtasks or related to the pilots you're doing. There are a number of challenges that have been identified and we do have a risk matrix where we have identified risks early on and come up with compensating measures. Some of the things that we know, know that we have to be aware of and try to focus on is how do we secure solid implementation and documentation of all the pilot actions that we do. One of the main goal is that we can contribute to the best practice portal of the Commission and what is needed then in order to demonstrate that what we are doing really deserve to be part of that portal. And then we want to scale up what is successful, how do we do that in the best way within a rather short project period? We need to secure this proper balance between individual level and more population level interventions, as I already talked about. We need to secure meaningful engagement with key target group, the end users that we have. And we need to identify key leverage points for policy change across the sectors. And the thing with public health is of course that we are not only looking at policy documents within the health sector, but across sectors. So the, our experts, they pointed to the fact that there is new legislation or directive on clean air coming out now that could be really important for us. And we know that within agriculture, education, all the directives in the, with the Commission and also at national level could be relevant for us. And it's important that we are aware of what's going on and how we can then play into that policy agenda. And the final point that's being made here is that we are of course looking to see what is happening at the European level. And Euro Health Net in one of their recent publication with colleagues from WHO pointed to the fact that during the last period of the Parliament, there were a lot of EU legal initiatives that were clearly relevant for NCD prevention that were delayed. And so we are also then seeing this as a challenge because a lot of member states are waiting for this EU level legislation to move on.
And as we said in the start of this webinar, we are sorry for not being in front of you and able to see you and have your comments. So due to our tight timeframe, we are unfortunately not able to open up for comments and questions live here today. But I would like to highlight however that our joint effort is dependent on all kinds of input and dialogue between all of us. So even if you don't have the time to, so even if we don't have the time to open up the podium today, please use the slider code here you see on the screen to share your comments and questions. And if there is time available, and I think it will be at the end of this session, we will try to answer some of them in the webinar. And if not, we will get back to you where relevant. So please note the code and log in before we move on because then we really appreciate if you have some comments, how to do this another time and if you have concrete questions as well. So then I move on and I show you how the slider and the number. Then to the slide with the preliminary results after the interim reporting. And as agreed in the General Assembly at the kickoff, we have internal reporting for months one to eight. In cooperation with the coordination team, the work packages have prepared detailed protocols for the work. And the detailed protocols with internal milestones and deliverables have proven to be a good tool to drive progress towards the overall plan. And the initial review of the reporting shows that the partners have made good progress towards internal plans and deliverables. And several pilots and activities have started data collection and preliminary analysis. And regarding financial reporting on personal months, PMs, eighty-four of ninety-six parties have reported. The main message is that there is under spending at this stage, but most partners estimate that PMs will be used in the project. And under spending early in the project is quite normal. But we have to say that because of this very huge project, we have to look up for for under spending and there will be set of meetings between coordinator and work packages to follow up reporting results. And this will address both progress and under spending. And the first formal reporting to HADEA, because what I talked about now was the interim reporting and that is not going to HADEA, but the first formal reporting to HADEA is for the period month one to month sixteen. And the reporting consists of technical and financial reporting. And we will get back to you on the matter of reporting and exact dates for that reporting.
So as you understand, what we have been doing so far in the project is really to establish all this, what is called building blocks here. We have had a number of deliverables already due to be submitted to HADEA. The previous slide that Linda showed showed all the internal milestones and deliverables we have. But then we have quite few that needs to be submitted to HADEA. But what you see here in terms of project website where was delivered early on and it's something I really encourage you all to to visit and use actively. We had a communication strategy and we had a handbook that were all delivered on time by the end of June. We also have had a number of milestones such as the evaluation strategy. And we have a number of other important outputs that have been made available, such as the Equity Tool Publication Guidelines. And we have established the boards and forums such as the External Expert Advisory Board. So the way forward, I think we have said something already about it, about the challenges that we need to address. But I think one thing that we see as really important is to ensure and identify synergies and overlap between work packages, task and subtask. And that relates also to what our external experts pointed to. How do we link the different tasks within this large project? But then also to build synergies and increase coherence with EU policy and action is really important. In the project, I think we can say we have really good dialogue with HADEA who are guiding us on the running of the project. We also would like to have a close contact with the DG Santé. And we are actually going to Luxembourg and visited them next month, which I think will be very useful because we have not had as close contact with them up to now as we've had with HADEA. And then as what was already pointed out, we need to ensure synergies to other joint action and action grants that we have clear deliverables and milestones related to how we collaborate with them. And then also key international actors such as WHO Euro, which is partner of the project and associate partner. But there are a number of other important European organizations that we do collaborate with. Some of them are subcontracted to do specific work. Other, we just like to really make sure that we have a coherent plan when we move forward. There are many ways of getting in contact with us. Whenever you contact something at a coordination team, we appreciate if you also include the Joint Action NCD Hälsoder email address that helps us to respond quickly and also keep track of all the, all the contacts we are getting. If you have questions or are interested in publications, we have a specific email address, We have our webpage that was mentioned, use it and spread the word that people can get information about the project there. And then we also are active on social media.
And before Charlotte is coming up with the comments and questions now to Knuttinger, I want to thank all of you for the, for the work you are doing within the project. In the work packages, in the tasks, in the subtasks, the pilots, all the activities, all of this work is really important to achieve the overall goals for the project and to reduce the burden of cancer and other NCDs. So this project is huge and to achieve these goals, we are dependent on working together with all of you. So thank you for all the effort you are putting into this project. And then, Knuttinger, do we have something here?
Yeah, thank you. We have quite a few questions and comments. The first one is how do you ensure representativeness of local authorities in the project as well as NGOs, civil society organizations? Key to engage end user success. And I think that's a really good comment. The project, of course, it is national authorities that are competent authorities. But then the competent authority has the ability then to connect with what we call affiliated entities. And that varies quite a bit from one country to another whom they are. In Norway, for example, affiliated entities are municipality and county because we have a public health legislation that allowed us to include those in the project. I know in work package on living, healthy living environment, work package six, there's a lot of collaboration with municipality actors. And then by the stakeholder analysis we're doing now, we really hope to get a better overview of important NGOs that we need to collaborate with. But the way the consortium is set up, NGOs are not formal partners of the project. But we are really keen on having them. And I think whenever you do work on a specific pilot or task where you see it would be useful to have this engagement, please do not hesitate to take contact with local authorities or contact us to get advice for how to do it in a good way.
And then we move on to the next question, how can we ensure that we do not overlap between the work packages, tasks and subtasks? And it's a, it's a big project and that's, that's a very good question and something we have a lot of focus on. And we have every month a meeting, the EXCO meeting, as we called it, in the Executive Committee, which is between all the VP work package leads and co leads and as a coordinator. And at each of these meetings, we address if it's something specific from each work package that has to be brought up. And how is it, how are you collaborating with other work package? Is it something that we should look at together? So we try to, to have as little overlap as possible and to identify whether there will become overlap and how to handle that. And then I also want to bring in another huge joint action, which is JAKARDI, which is the joint action on cardiovascular diseases and diabetes. And we also have a very close collaboration with, with the coordination team in JAKARDI, also aiming to not overlap between the two huge joint actions. So we try to, to, to make sure that we are not doing that, but it's always a risk of having a little bit of overlap. So if you see that, please notice us.
Yeah, it is, it is huge and a very important point. And I think it is, so at least from my perspective, it's impossible to have a full overview and identify all of these. So we really also rely on you being active on Teams, checking out because you should all have access to the various channels and be able to look and read to see what is the content of different subtasks and pilots that you think have a title that might be relevant for the work that you are doing. Then there is a question about the next in person meeting for the whole consortium.
For the whole consortium, the next in person meeting will be in June in Poland. And the date is now, I'm just looking at someone you don't see on the webinar, but is it we'll look into the dates, it is in June?
Mid-June.
Mid-June, yeah. We can come back to you with the exact dates and also put it on the calendar in the webpage. Because as early as possible, we want to put the, the different meetings and also different conferences that are of interest to the project in the, in the project's webpage and the calendar in there.
Yeah, so we're combining the annual meeting for twenty twenty-five with the second meeting of what we still call the EU CCP, Consortium on Cancer Prevention. Then the question is, could you please present us a timeline with the main concrete milestones of the project? That of course is available from the contract, which you should all have access to. But I agree, we should make that more readily available. So we make sure that this is also communicated clearly in our Teams channels.
Yeah, absolutely. Could you please ensure that the meeting is recorded and that a link to the recording is made available afterwards? Easy question, yes, we can. It will be recorded and it will be shared. So you can look at it whenever you want, during the weekend, for example.
How are social inequalities addressed more broadly? Where can I read about it? And then this is something that cut across the whole project. Our work package seven on social inequality is the place to start and there are activities there where they, for example, now are, have come quite far in doing systematic review on policy across different sectors and, and the broad set of, of policies. So that is one place where it is being addressed in a very coherent way.
And the last question, can you please elaborate on what a policy brief includes? Knuttinger, what does that include?
Yeah, so a policy brief is whenever we come up with results from our action that we think have policy implications, where we think we can give an advice to Where we think we can give an advice to uh local or national or EU level um decision-makers. Uh based on the findings from our project, we write what we call a policy brief. So it's a fairly brief document, it is structured. And it is something that we like to be discussed quite extensively within the consortium. So that there is a broad agreement about the uh what our recommendations or conclusions are in these. Uh and in this um um plan of what the work that the publication board has been doing. This is something that's been outlined. In the handbook, you will find information. But when it came to publication, we saw a need to expand a bit on what's on in um in the handbook. So for that reason, on this topic, I will advise you to look at the publication um uh plan or guide. Uh and that will be available at the same place as you, well, within the publication folder. But also where the handbook is available on on the web.
That was the question that have come in. And again, we want to thank you all for attending this webinar. And to spread it out to those that could not attend today, you can look at it whenever you want to. And also look into the calendar and see uh see the dates for for the next in-person meeting. Because webinars is uh an okay way to to spread the information. But it is very nice when we can meet together in person and discuss the different topics in this project. So but again, thank you so much for all the important work you are doing and for attending this meeting. And have a nice weekend in a quite some hours.
Thank you also from me. Thank you and bye for now.